Good evening, everyone. It is 6:30 and I am calling the Monday, March 13th, 2023 Palmer Town Council meeting to order. Would ask if everybody could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual for the liberty and justice of all.
All right, we're gonna have visitors' comments. If there is anything that's not on the agenda that somebody would like to comment on, I invite you to the microphone. Just state your name and your address.
This is me. Anne Miller, 60 Buckland Street, Palmer, Mass., Depot Village. So I come bearing information. I'm not here to proselytize. I have noticed that at earlier council meetings and some of the emails and Facebook posts going around, there's a lot of confusion about where rail is at right now, both in Palmer and at the state level. So I'm really just bringing information and wondering if you have questions. Now, I'll just describe what I brought.
Sure, thank you.
And then I will...
Thank you.
...know if there's questions and then I'm sure I'll wait.
Thank you.
I know a lot of figures out there floating around and so maybe Mr. Hope can clarify a few things a little bit. Go ahead. Okay, so what I brought here, the first two pages are kind of a cheat sheet for studies that have been done to date that looked at a Palmer station. So what I tried to do was summarize the point of the studies and whether or not they actually looked at citing a station. I think the reason the Palmer Rail Steering Committee is trying to get the town to go forward on that idea of a station citing study is because technically none has been done. So that's what I was trying to emphasize with these different studies. There are quite a few, so if you don't fall in the issue, it's easy to get confused about where things are at with that. I add in at the end, on page two, some of what we've spent to date. That's the $20,000 that the town spent to produce the case for Palmer, and that was during the East West Passenger Rail Study. And that Palmer was in all three alternatives, so probably a good use of money there. And additionally, of course, Linda Leduke, our town planner, was a member of the East West Passenger Rail Study Advisory Board. So her time, I realize there's been other time spent on the case for Palmer, the current RFP draft, et cetera. So I'm just summarizing that. The Palmer Redevelopment Authority, which of course is a state board, not a town board, spent $10,000 on the Palmer Transit Oriented Development Draft conceptual downtown plan back in 2017. That was a, what they call a TOD study, a transit-oriented development study. And as I say in the description, it only sort of briefly looked at potential locations, not in any detail. That cost $10,000 from the PRA. So our expenses to date on this have not been too high. This figure has been floated out at earlier meetings, the 15 million, that is not allocated anywhere, that is just an estimate. Quite honestly, it's one I came up with in response to a reporter's question, and it seems to have gained traction. I think it's because the East West Passenger Rail Study suggested it would be 12 and a half million for a new station in Palmer, and I was just allowing for inflation, current inflation. So it was just, as I say, approximate, but it's, you know, it's just, it's just a number. Governor Healey's proposed fiscal year '24 budget allocation, you probably saw the news stories about that, are suggesting $4 million for a Palmer Rail Station. That money is just proposed at the moment, so, you know, whether it'll make it into the final budget is anyone's guess. The potential economic benefits, as outlined in one of the studies I cited, are 650,000 square feet of commercial space, 1,800 housing units, and 1,100 jobs. So that's my little cheat sheet for studies done to date. And on the following page is a graphic, and that is where I got those figures, or the bulleted figures on page two. And that is from the, I think I cited, it's from the Metro Hartford Springfield Economic Benefits of Regional Rail, which Palmer was in, quite happily, partly based on that PRA study, actually, which is cited in there by the CRCOG study. And the next page I gave you is a printout from the case for Palmer, the document we prepared for the East West Passenger Rail Study. And there I highlighted the wording that said we would focus on developing a plan, should Palmer be recommended as a stop in the East West Passenger Rail Study, that we would focus on developing a plan that addresses the improvement of downtown Palmer. These improvements would be based on smart growth principles and include detailed options for the station, an intermodal transportation center, and a transit-oriented development district, which I think the last is still something on the agenda for the master plan. And then what I put at the end are the, I know there's a lot of interest in the rail commission. The rail commission's likely to be extended. The rumor is they're asking for two months' extension. What we're hearing is it'll probably go till the end of the budget season. So I put those notices in there. You can also, if you go to the website, attend virtually. If you attend virtually, however, I don't think there's a way to, like, sign in and indicate who you are. I put those in there just because, even though the rail commission is not looking at things like issuing guidelines or citing a station in Palmer, it's not looking at stops. It's looking at the governance and the funding of future East West Rail. But on the other hand, if we want that $4 million to make it through to the end of the budget process after the House gets their hands on it, the Senate gets their hands on it, the, you know, Resolution Committee gets their hands on it, if anybody can attend any of these meetings, even though it's not the topic at hand, it gives you a great chance to schmooze with the legislators and commission members and advocate to keep that $4 million in. So that's it.
Thank you.
Any questions on any of that?
Oh, thank you, Anne. We really appreciate the information.
Any questions? No questions?
I just wanted to just make a brief comment because, Anne, as you mentioned, Governor Healey did propose a $4 million appropriation in her first iteration of the FY '24 budget for a feasibility study and design of a Palmer Rail Station, and that's huge for the community, a huge possibility. So I have a contact in the lieutenant governor's office, one of her deputy chief of staff, and I asked him, I said, can you put me in touch with somebody who can better explain the intent of this funding, should it make it into the final iteration of the budget? And so we did, and because one of the questions that I had was that we are receiving as a council a lot of pressure to fund a feasibility study with our own free cash, and I just wanted to make sure that we were not gonna do anything duplicative and unnecessary. So I did reach out and I was put in touch with somebody from the administration and finance team, and they said that it would be, that they recommended that we did not put any local funds towards the study at this time until we know whether this makes it into the final iteration of the budget or not, and that our efforts would make more sense to put our local funds into pursuing federal dollars, which will be past, you know, a station's design and study. So I, you know, am, my dad's been an Amtrak employee for almost 30 years. Railroad runs deep in my family. I'm a huge supporter of bringing this to our community, and I'm going to do what I can to help lobby the legislature to make sure that this $4 million ends up in the final iteration of the FY '24 budget. But until then, I do not have any intentions of supporting any local funds going towards the study until we know what the outcome of the FY '24 budget is.
I understand. Thank you for that information. I would only say that it had been recommended by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission had Kim Robinson last May that the town should go forward sooner rather than later. I think I can understand, hoping that money will come through the pipeline, the drawback would be, it's kind of a risk. So the question is, if the town funds its own study, it obviously is spending a significant chunk of change. On the other hand, it's a little more probably a certainty of what would come down the line. However, that said, I did not come here specifically to proselytize one way or the other on that, just, I could tell there was a lot of confusion, so I just wanted to give people some information. I mean, personally, I would favor going forward with it, but obviously you've come to a different conclusion. But as far as people pressuring the council, that's not coming from myself or Ben Hood. They're acting on their own.
No, I understand, but I think the conversation is just relevant, given what you're here to talk about, and I think what we've, what's been at the forefront of our conversation, of our emails the past couple of months. So, and I know that those folks, they might be watching as well, so I was gonna save that email for later on in the councilor's roundtable, but now that the conversation is happening right here, I figure why not share at the beginning of the meeting just kind of what I've been told from the governors, the executive offices, you know, their recommendation is that it probably wouldn't be wise for us to spend local dollars at this point, so, yeah.
Did they give you any clue of a ballpark when they're gonna have the answer for that?
Well, so that, we'll know once the FY '24 budget is completed, which is usually like October. Should be July, but it's like October.
So it is, I think, important for the town to advocate for that. We've been doing this full-time for about eight years. We're not paid by anybody, and we're actually not rail buffs.
Right.
We're just, we always felt it would really be a huge benefit for the town. We kind of wanted to see Palmer come back to its previous glory, particularly Depot Village, obviously. So I think that's really been our motive all along. We don't have any other motive, and it's been hugely, you know, time-consuming and expensive for us. I think it's kind of a success that we've got this far along, from, you know, both what the town's done and what we've done, but obviously, anyway.
Yeah. No, and I can't express my appreciation enough for what you and Ben specifically do for this mission. I mean, I know you guys have been here from day one, before this was even on anybody else's radar, and I can't thank you guys enough for the work that you do. And we, and I can't, like, I think I can speak for the entire council that we all want this too, and that we will, that we will do everything we can to get this to come to our community, but I'm gonna make sure, I think it would behoove us, to make sure that we are on the same page as the state, the governor's office, as we make, you know, strategic moves going forward. And I think by the governor proposing this $4 million appropriation, it caught us off-guard a little bit. And so I think just working on that communication aspect with the governor, whereas we could have had that communication open, and she could have, her office could have said, like, hey, you know, we really believe that Palmer deserves a rail station, and this is what we're doing towards that. And, but instead, you know, we had to kind of find this out, like everybody else found out, and then go beyond and have to reach out to certain people who we know in the governor's office and be like, what does this mean for us? And then, now that I know what this means for us, now I can go to the legislature, to our representatives and other powerful representatives, and say, this is what Palmer needs, this is what Massachusetts needs. And I'm, you know, I'm confident that we will be able to do that over the next couple of months.
I'd like to just reinforce what Councillor Sizer said. Again, speaking for myself, and I'll take the liberty of the council, none of us have been confused about anything, okay? And I think what Councillor Sizer just said, we were blindsided, I was Friday reading that article in The Republican, and again, reached out, I think as most of us probably did, to contacts that we have, and kind of looking for the, you know, what's up with this. And it reinforces my decision more than ever to definitely pump the brakes and not spend a penny of taxpayer money until we have further clarification, whether it's, you know, in a month from now, the end of the fiscal year, or October. But I think it would be money purely poorly invested at this point.
Okay. So are there any other visitors' comments?
It must've been kind of a full-time effort for us, I have to say. It kind of has taken over our lives, and we kind of like our lives back. So I think, you know, it's kind of reached a point where we feel like all final stuffs, most of the final stuffs need to be done at the town's level.
Sure, and I feel we've addressed that.
Moving on to the minutes for January 9th, 2023. Any comments?
No, I didn't see any.
Okay. I think that they came out really well. I wouldn't make any amendments to these meeting minutes. I would just say, in the future, there were certain areas that just seemed a little bit too conversational, and I think they could just be narrowed down to kind of more of a summary, and I can touch base with you separately if you want.
Absolutely, thank you, Jeff.
Okay, take a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
All the, any discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying. I wasn't here for that meeting.
Yes. Is there any old business? Seeing none? New business? The Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Proclamation. We have Councillor Lavoy read the proclamation.
Town of Palmer, Bonzville, Depot Village, Thorndike, and Three Rivers, the town of Seven Railroads, proclamation. Resolution in recognition of Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day, whereas March 13th, 2023, was established by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to recognize the veterans of the Vietnam War. And whereas, on this day, we honor all Vietnam and Vietnam-era veterans for their courage and their loyalty to their country during turbulent times. And whereas, we honor those who were prisoners of war, those still missing in action, and those who gave the ultimate sacrifice, the laying down of their lives to preserve freedom throughout the world. And whereas, we acknowledge those Vietnam veterans who still suffer the remnants of war, be it physically or psychologically, and we offer our support as they continue to fight their personal inner war. And whereas, the Vietnam veterans of war deserve our gratitude and respect for the time, effort, and dedication that they have given in the service of their country. And on this day of remembrance, may we never forget the men and women who have given so much. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Palmer Town Council salutes our Vietnam veterans, and those who have passed commemorates the Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day, and hopes that all citizens of the Town of Palmer remember and respect the sacrifices made by those who fought to preserve our way of life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Any Vietnam veterans here? Billy, stand up, please, for recognition.
All right, and we will be sending around that proclamation for signatures from the Up next, we are going to have a department head report from John Latour, our Community Development Director, on the Hurnavitz Park and CDBG grant update.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you for having me. The current status of Hurnavitz Park is, this week we'll be signing a contract for the site work, soon to be followed by the installation of the playground equipment. So the goal is to have it done by this fall, completed. The biggest part of it, the site work, is moving the playground about 100 feet from its current location, more towards the center of the park. The other grants that we've, in the midst, we just submitted a grant for the infrastructure work associated with Maple Street and Maple Terrace. Maple Street will be a comprehensive approach with sewer, water, sidewalks, paving, and we've been working with the DPW and other, the water districts to come up with a feasible plan. The biggest part of that is gonna be the design part of it, which is for both streets, Maple Street and Maple Terrace. And we're hoping that the first phase is Maple Street, the second phase would be Maple Terrace. The last cup, should I do a little bit on the fuel assistance?
Sure.
So the fuel assistance that we administered over this past heating season, in combination, we assisted 76 families, primarily over 70% seniors. The, it's from numerous sources, some came from the town funds, some came from the Attorney General's Office, and some came from a generous donation. I would, I'm available if anybody wants to discuss any of the outcomes and some of the grants that we are currently in the process of closing out. Any questions?
As a member of the community with a vested interest in Hurnavitz Park because of events happening in the later half of the year, I am very interested in the timeline, and if we're gonna stick to the timeline, otherwise I need to move events.
So this Thursday, we're having a pre-construction meeting for the scheduling of the timeline for when they will start. We pushed to have the bid process done early in the year so that it would take place earlier in the year, and the last of which would be the playground equipment. That is a little more flexible in the, when the installation will occur, but the site work itself, the sidewalk replacement that will occur in there, and a lot of the infrastructure work will happen, I'm hoping, in May.
Okay. Yeah, July and August are the two dates that we have set up so far currently.
So one of the key things I'm gonna, is some of the electrical work, I'm hoping that this will be addressed.
Okay.
Especially associated with the gazebo.
Got it. Okay, we'll talk offline.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions, comments? I'll mouse up. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Up next, we have a department head report from Ken Lord from the wastewater treatment plant with Tony DeCruz from Time Bond. If you guys wanna come on up?
And this is also a chance to ask questions about the resolutions that are on the agenda tonight, as a bulk of these are related to the wastewater treatment plant. So both Ken Lord and Tony DeCruz are involved in helping put together the projects for these?
Right now, we're in the progress of new roofs, centrifuge, a bunch of upcoming projects that every year we're moving forward with additional projects, and as we speak, some more major ones came up that were not in the scope of what we originally designed. So I'll let Tony speak on those for the most part. Any questions about what's happening or?
Well, we approved that a while ago.
So the roof is essentially done. The design is complete. We expect to be going out to bid later on this month. There will be a roughly a four to six-week period for bidding, contract selection, thereabouts. We believe that most of that work will occur in 2023, so that's good. The centrifuge is a two-part process. The centrifuge is replacing the existing belt filter press that dewaters the sludge. There is a two-part process for the bidding. The first piece of it is to do what's called a Chapter 30B, which is securing and selecting the manufacturer and equipment. Once that's done, then it goes out for a general contractor bid under Chapter 149, and that will be to select a general contractor that will install the piece of equipment that was selected under Chapter 30B, as well as any modifications, structural, electrical, mechanical, things of that nature. Those have a very, very long lead time. Those pieces of equipment right now are in the 50-plus weeks lead time, so chances of that being completed in 2023 are slim and none. But there are other activities in anticipation of them, the equipment coming in, being installed, that can be done by the general contractor. So that's a much longer window on the centrifuge. And then we're here for three additional projects that I can talk about if you want. The first is a new boiler.
I just wanna, just really quick, sorry to interrupt, but the boiler and the ultraviolet process, those were previously identified on the capital plan that was part of the rate study. The only thing on here that was something that we discovered and had to sort of add and plan around is this main junction siphon vault design.
And I can talk about all three pretty quickly. The boiler design is very straightforward. Kenny notified me a couple of months ago, they had the boiler serviced. The company that was servicing the boiler made the town aware that their boiler is literally on their last legs. The boiler is original to the construction, 1978. The burner, however, was replaced eight, 10 years ago?
About, yeah, 10 or 12.
Okay, 10 or 12. So the boil, so we had our mechanical engineer come out, we met with Kenny, we looked at the boiler. The boiler is definitely oversized for the plant, for how the plant is run today versus 1978. The boiler is oversized, so you're essentially burning more fuel than you need to. There's a heat exchanger component that hasn't operated probably in 20 years, 25 years.
It works inside, but there.
There's a hot water plant system that is essentially non-operational, and it's not needed. So in this design, while it's $68,000, there's a significant component of that which is a redesign for a smaller boiler. So we have to look at the systems that are in place, look at some of the capital improvements that are planned in the next five to 10 years, and resize the boiler so it's not just take Boiler A out and put a Boiler A back. So there's some engineering that's gonna go involved, but the benefit there is you're gonna end up with a smaller boiler, so you're gonna have some cost savings. The other big component in that, and I forgot what the exact number was, but about $10,000, $12,000 of that 68 is for HBMI, so that's hazardous building materials. It's very evident that this boiler has a lot of asbestos-lit paint, most likely PCBs, so there's a big piece of that is to mitigate the demolition of that boiler and how to dispose of it. So there's some costs in there involved on the HBMI. Not sure with the current bid climate, it's really unclear what a new boiler is gonna cost, or when it would be available. It could be a year-long project. They currently could operate without the boiler during the non-heating months. There's no chance, though, that we'd have the new boiler in place by next winter. From a design perspective, no problem, but from a contractor perspective and securing the new boiler and installing it, you might be limping along one more heating season with the existing boiler. We'll keep our fingers crossed, and we can expedite the design, but not much we can do on the new boiler. The ultraviolet process, Kenny can talk a little bit about how they disinfect their discharge. Right now, it is with a gaseous chlorine system, which I'm not aware of any other facility that has gaseous chlorine in this part of the state.
No, we're on... Warren does. We have to send guys down to change their chlorine gases.
But they're in the process of converting that.
Yeah.
So they are already in the process of eliminating their gaseous chlorine system. Gaseous chlorine is very dangerous to the operators, but also to the residents. If there was a gaseous chlorine leak, that would be very, very, very impactful to the folks downstream of the facility. If there was a gaseous chlorine leak, that would be very, very, very impactful to the, to the folks downstream of the facility. A lot of facilities are converting to hypochlorite or have done that, have done so in the past ten years. The new technology out for the past few years is ultraviolet. A lot less costly, a lot easier to operate, very operator-friendly. Kenny is very familiar with that from other facilities. So this is to update or essentially replace the existing gaseous chlorine system. That's in place with a UV disinfection system for the discharge.
Yeah, go ahead. I think you're on the same page.
Yeah, the ultraviolet light system, I know a little bit about that. How much more expensive is that, you know, switch over than the chlorine or?
Yeah, so the, the, so folks are really going away from the hypochlorite system, which is a chlorine-type system because of a variety of different things, but one is fire suppression and things of that nature. Operator use, purchasing of chemicals, ultraviolet is electricity and bulbs. So it's a much easier system to operate.
How much is this?
It's less costly than a hypochlorite system to operate, yep.
In the, in the rate schedule, we budgeted one point three million dollars.
Yep, for the UV system. Now.
So over, about a million dollars.
The only thing I will say, when the rate study was done, that was two years ago.
That was for the UV or the hypochlorite?
That was the UV. That was UV.
Yeah, that's much better system.
We already had identified it as a UV replacement, because that's where all new systems in the past two years are going. Folks that were already in the process of converting was hypochlorite.
So are there green community grants to get us to there? Because we're going from something harsh to something more green?
I'm not aware of one right now.
No? I mean, I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, I know that the program's out there, so.
Yeah, that, 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 not that type of program.
That's only for your house.
I mean.
Well, they, yeah.
I mean, the gaseous chlorine is just, it is a danger to. It has been on the docket for twelve years now, Kenny. I believe the town ten or twelve years ago was in the process of doing a hypochlorite conversion. Kenny can talk about that. I was not involved, Time Bond was not involved, but maybe you could just.
We had a whole hypo system designed. We put aside two hundred and forty thousand dollars for it and it came way low, so that was just shelved. We had it all designed and we just, town couldn't afford it at the time, so we didn't, we didn't move forward with the project.
So that's been on the docket ten-plus years.
Yep.
The third item is the junction structure at the end of Ruggles and, help me out here, what's the other?
Riverside?
Riverside. So there are three main lines. I could email you some photos and some plans if you want to look at that. But there is essentially a ten-by-twenty structure where three pipes come in. There's a thirty-inch line that comes in from pump station three, which is in three, Three Rivers. That takes flow from pump stations one and two in Depot Village, pumps over to pump station three. Pump station three discharges to this ten-by-twenty structure. All the flow from Bonsville comes from pump station four and discharges into this structure. That's another thirty-inch line. And then there's an eight-inch line that comes in from gravity sewer for the neighborhood. Approximately ninety percent of the flow that goes to the treatment plant comes through this structure. This structure was built in nineteen seventy-six. It's a concrete structure, walls, roof, the whole nine yards. Well over one point two million gallons of wastewater flows through this structure. The town did an inspection of this structure, Kenny can speak to that. Several months ago, we got involved, we got into the structure, took a look at it, and the structure is definitely impacted. And what I mean by impacted, the concrete is essentially flaking and breaking off. The roof of the structure is the worst of it. We instructed the town to put up some jersey borders just to prohibit vehicle access on top of the structure so it doesn't collapse. Were it to collapse, the line that goes out of this structure goes underneath the Ware River. There's three-barrel siphon. Siphon is a pipe that starts at a higher elevation, dips down and comes back up to another higher elevation. So imagine a U that goes underneath the Ware River and discharges to another structure on the treatment side, on the treatment plant side. So we've looked at both structures. The structure that is at the end of Riverside is in very, very bad shape. Most of the concrete is completely exposed. All the grating, all the shelving that diverts flows within the structure is literally gone. It's all aggregate. All the metal shelving that was in there for operators to go down and clear blockages or do any type of work has literally disintegrated over the years. And the reason is, there's a lot of turbulent flow that goes through that structure. And in the wastewater, the hydrogen sulfide gases, when you, when you stir up all that wastewater, the gases evaporate out. They couldn't even open the structures, the grating, to access the structures. They're all kind of seized completely. So the hydrogen sulfide over the past forty-five-plus years has done a number on this structure. The good, the good news is the structure on the other side, on the treatment plant side, is in really good condition. But that has a more laminar flow, it's very easy flowing, so you don't get the hydrogen sulfide gases coming out. The problem with this structure is how do you repair it, how do you replace it? It's not like you can turn the, the switch off on wastewater. If it fails, it's going to fail into the river. It's right adjacent to the Ware River. So what we're proposing is a thirty-five thousand dollar study to come up with some options on how to either rehabilitate the structure or replace it. And more importantly, what's the cost going to be? Chances are, it's going to be a very large cost and a very large project to keep all that flow flowing and at the same time replace this structure. Like I said, it's ten by twenty, one point two million gallons, ninety percent of the town's flows go through there. So how do you divert it, how do you get it across the river while you rehabilitate this, and what's the cost going to be? I don't think it's in any imminent hazard of collapsing like tomorrow or next month, but that's just a gut reaction. But you do need to start planning for how you're going to address this in the coming year or couple of years. My guess is it will be a pretty large capital investment and obviously the town will need to plan for it accordingly. So this is just a study to come up with some options, come up with some costs associated with those options, and then let the town make the decision that's best for them.
Now, when?
I'll wait till you're done, no.
Um, how often was this looked at? Like, like is it every ten, five, every year, every five years?
I couldn't tell you.
Like, why did, why did, right now, why did we decide to look at this structure?
Because we had to clean our influence channel and there was a lot of grit.
Okay.
And what happened was, we ended up getting a vat truck in there with a bigger nozzle to clean out the treatment plant side. So after cleaning that out, we decided to go on the other side and investigate that to see if it was, how far it was backed up through the siphon. And when we popped it open, there was no grit there, but as Tony said, it's falling apart.
Yeah.
You can literally take a pen and scratch the walls and go in about this deep. It's almost like clay, we can scrape it off.
Wow.
So that's, that's what led us, led us over to investigate it.
Yeah, okay.
Mine is just a general question. The cake that is removed that you put into either the dumpster or someone to take it away, does all the communities go to the same spot where they produce fertilizer out of it? And do we have to pay for the trucking or do they give us money for their product that they make a profit out of?
It goes out to bid and we're at the mercy of the bids. Last time we went out to bid, actually the last two times, it was when one company had bid on it. We were using Incinerator years ago and they just came in one day, said, they were, they were closing down one of their incinerators in Connecticut. So they said, we're not doing you anymore, we're not taking your sludge. So right now, Casellas does it, we have to pay, right, I believe it's one fifty-five, one hundred and fifty-five dollars a wet ton. Then there's trucking fees. Right now, they're taking it to the MDC in Hartford, which is like four different locations that they can take it to, but that's not our decision, that's up to Casellas.
They don't make fertilizer out of it?
No, they, they burn it.
Yeah.
They burn it.
It's burn it.
It's not a class.
Do they make fertilizer out of it?
Yeah, it's got to be a class A sludge.
No, there are some, there are some sludge drying facilities, Niafco being one of them, Quincy being another, that actually do make a reusable sludge, a reusable fertilizer.
Yeah.
But it's a very costly process.
Oh, is it?
Very costly. You got to get all the nasty stuff out of there.
Yeah.
Right now, that's part of the reason why we're in the process of doing a centrifuge is to reduce that volume of water that literally gets trucked out and then incinerated. The costs right now, I think your annual numbers.
Six hundred thousand dollars.
About six hundred thousand dollars to get rid of it. So we're hoping that with the centrifuge, we can cut that back by about forty percent. Because the cake that's going out today is about fourteen percent.
Fourteen and sixteen.
And our new centrifuge minimum cake will be around twenty-five percent.
Thank you.
Can you, do you have to measure that kind of stuff? I'm just kind of curious. You measure the moisture and stuff coming out?
Every, every day.
It's got to be reported to DEP.
Yeah, every, every, every month, I'd send a report to the EPA and DEP and it has to be on the DMR, as they call it.
Got it.
Once a year, they ask how many total tons you sent out, where and when to, who's trucking it out. That's an annual report just due in February.
We just got our, our permit renewed and then we're coming up on a new permit in a year or two, right? That's going to be a brand-new NFT's permit.
Yeah, so your permit essentially has been expired for five years. Your NFT's discharge permit has been, they issue them in five-year increments. Your current permit is actually five years past its renewal date. The town submitted the renewal, everything's fine. They typically will tell you to just operate under the previous permit. The town, I was not involved in that meeting, but I believe you guys met with representatives of DEP and EPA a few months back. They indicated in a draft permit, the new draft permit would be issued sometime this spring.
Right.
And that'll be in effect for five years.
But it will have all kinds of new things that we have to monitor for.
Got it.
Like individual chemicals.
Most likely, the new permit will have more stringent requirements around nitrogen and phosphorus.
Being released into the river.
Yes.
Got it.
And PFOS are another big one they're coming forward with. All our sludge will have to be tested, every dumpster will have to be tested for PFOS. And that, last time I checked is, the rumor was, it's almost three thousand dollars to test. And that'll, that'll be done every quarter.
Have we ever done it?
No.
I know that there's a big issue in the area, local communities, not ours, but.
Water communities are required.
Right.
Water departments are required and they come in at different levels depending on how many customers you have.
Got it.
It's never been required on the wastewater stream for the simple reason that we all know it's there. So if you're going to test it, now you have to do something.
So now they're just setting limits?
There's no regulations, there's no guidelines out there yet on what to do if it tests positive. Where does it go? What do you do with it? They're forever chemicals, right, PFOS? So until the EPA sets some guidelines, I don't think you're going to see that requirement, but it's coming, yes. It's coming, for sure.
Real quick, on the, back to the siphon vault design thing. I'm assuming that, you know, once you've figured out a design, is this thing going to, like you said, you obviously can't just shut it off, when are they going to end up having to like build alongside of what's already existing there? And then at the last minute, tie into the new system, something to that effect?
That could be an option. The problem with that is you're probably, and that will be an option for sure. Do you have the land? Probably don't. There's easements that were taken for that structure and the pipes leading to and from.
Right.
There's definitely not room in there for another, so you might be into some land acquisition with that option.
Sort of like a sleeve-in?
How, how do you get it across the river? It probably will involve what we call a temporary bridge across the river with a pipe straddled to the bridge.
Right.
With pumps operating twenty-four-seven upstream to divert the flow. So all those options are very costly to replace it. We will also look at rehabilitating the existing structure.
Sleeveing it?
Because the roof is the one that's the most susceptible. We'll look at taking the roof off and recasting a new roof and then doing something with the walls, probably an epoxy coating to get a little more longevity out of it. But that also involves doing the work in the dry, so you still have to do something with the flow that goes through there. So that's what this study is about, is coming up with up to three alternatives, putting some real dollars to those alternatives and then presenting it to the town and saying, here's, here's, here's what you can do out there and here's the costs.
Right.
And then you can plan accordingly.
Everybody in town, go use your in-laws in another town's for one weekend.
Well, if this helps.
Turn it off and when it starts coming up to your house, you need to go outside for that.
If this helps at all, when I was a, a young kid, I floated down the Quaybog and as soon as I hit by the grains, there was pipes coming out and. So it didn't affect me none.
Up until two thousand, you had twenty-nine, I believe, sewer overflows in Palmer.
Right.
Yeah. I don't even think there was any.
Two thousand CSO program came into play and I think by two thousand.
We were early on it.
Eleven, I think.
Or eleven, you were down to zero.
Right.
So was this not a part of the sewer study?
The junction structure?
Yeah.
No.
It was not part of the capital program.
Was it?
It was unknown.
Was it overlooked or ju- just an unknown?
That's what, well, from the conversation I got.
Came up.
Kind of stumbled.
Looking at it and.
Well, because I just like, I, I don't know. I think of like when the bridges, right, like Mast Dot comes out every year and they're like, okay, you got a little spalling, you got some rebar showing, like they give us a whole report, you get a B, a C, and a D here. Like, I feel like they might, there might want to be a program for something like this, so we're not all like up to our needs and.
Even internally, you know, like a, like let's assess what we have if we can assess it.
Well, we just did.
Well, yeah.
A little late, but.
Going forward, I think.
We can, we can assess the stuff that we can visually see, but there's so much.
Right.
That's underground that we can't. It's like, it's like the siphon we're talking about that goes underneath the river. We have, we're going to have to camera that, I'm assuming, when we, we do the structure.
Right.
And shut down some, suck out the sewage that's in there and get a camera down there to see what the.
You're going to have to use like a roll control boat or something that got a camera on it?
There's cameras. Yeah, robotic cameras that would wheels and everything, lights and.
The, the, the three-barrel siphon under the Ware River at that location was built at the same time, but it's concrete encased. So there's some protection there, right? And there has been no visual impacts along the Ware River that would lead us to any of this conclusions. But if we're going to be working on the structure, taking it offline to do repairs, that's the time to send some cameras down and verify the condition of these things.
Sure.
And do you need all three barrels? That's another thing that we'll, we'll have to discuss, because this was designed in nineteen seventy-six when the town had a combined sewer system.
Right. So there's a lot less flowage now, you're saying?
Exactly.
Our, our plant is designed for four and a half million gallons a day.
Five point.
Yeah, five.
Five point two million gallons a day, we do about one point four.
On average, weather around two, two point two.
Yeah.
And compare that to pre-CSO, you guys would push out about twenty?
Twenty, twenty-two.
Twenty, twenty-two million.
Right, and ninety-nine percent of it was just runoff water.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
That's not, that's not what was going out to the river on all those.
So that's what you meant by combined, stormwater and sewer?
Were combined.
Swim away.
So then when we changed that, because I was like, wait a second, why did we have such a decrease in customers? But it's not a decrease in customers, it was a decrease in volume due to stormwater being separated from the sewer.
Because if you've got too much stormwater, the pipes let out to the river and it was mixed with the sewer system.
Understood now.
The plant is, has plenty of capacity for the residents, future growth, commercial growth, the whole nine yards. It's just, it's old and it's, you know, it's, a lot of it is still original vintage.
Yeah, it needs an upgrade. I mean, that's, that's what the whole sewer rate study was. Because everything's, I mean, we're, we've been doing the best we can, but a lot of the stuff, half the plant is good, but the other half of plant, like all our tanks got to be redone. There's so much work that has to be done that, and it's going to be a heavy price. I mean, you just can't.
Yeah.
Wiggle your nose and have it done. Wiggle your nose and have it done.
The largest complaint that I've received is that the plant originally was built in the seventies, right?
Seventy-eight.
Using taxpayer money from everybody in town.
I I can't speak.
I know, I just.
Completely to that, but I believe it was heavily um funded through the federal government.
Oh, it'd be been, okay, so.
And I don't remember the exact numbers back then.
The biggest.
I was named it in high school.
Right, the biggest.
Eighty or ninety percent grants from the federal government.
Okay, that sounds a lot better, so I can at least pass that along.
Believe, I don't know the exact numbers.
So the biggest complaint is is that the only the users are footing the bill from these millions of dollars of repairs. Instead of all the taxpayers in town who benefit.
That is not correct on the C S O. I know that for a fact.
C S O wasn't.
C S O was split, I believe that, I believe, because it involved improvement to water quality and recreational water. And so on, I believe the town at that time decided to fund it fifty-fifty. Fifty on the general tax base and fifty strictly on the sewer users.
The enterprise.
I believe.
Right, see it.
I don't know if Ryan can.
I don't, I have to.
I thought it was something like a fifty-fifty.
That's the largest complaint, right, but that's the largest complaint I've gotten from taxpayers so far is that. The people that are going to be paying for this are the people that are the sewer users when everybody in town benefits from the sewer treatment plant.
Well, that's not really true.
It is and it isn't.
It was pre-C S O.
Correct.
Post-C S O, strictly on the.
Well, if to be the devil's advocate, if this siphon vault uh vault the system fails. It would impact the whole town peoples. And just to be devil's advocate again, I I kinda get where some of these people are coming from because. No matter what, if you have kids in school or not, you're still paying for your schools, so.
Right, right, well.
So, I mean, yeah, you can't have your cake and eat it too.
Yeah.
One question, the people that that have theirs pumped by a company and they bring them to you, they pay.
They pay too.
Whatever service is taking it.
Paid the sewer, yeah, the guy that come to pump it, they pay them and then.
Ten and a half cents a gallon for what they discharge to us.
Right, so there's that and then.
Reality, you're better off with less sewer systems and.
More septic?
Depending on where you're at by waters.
Not from there, so there is a revenue stream, yes. The the the, let's be the devil's advocate, when your new permit comes out, that revenue stream may dry up. Alright, um and the reason for that is the new permit restrictions that the town's gonna have is gonna really make them look really. Hard at taking in this outside revenue stream. Cause they're not gonna be able to meet permit. A lot of communities have done away with taking septic. Cause they cannot meet their discharge permit and by taking septic, which has very, very high nutrients. So when you we talk about nitrogen and phosphorus, the septic that comes in is way up here. The your sewage that comes in is way down here and if your permit is way down here. That delta becomes very difficult and the last thing you wanna do is not meet permit.
And the smaller the plant, the more it affects it.
Right, so I'm not a sewer expert, you obviously know way more than I do. So what, you said the capa- we're not even using nearly the capacity, so why can't we treat the stuff coming in? From the septic stuff in a different tank longer to get, you know what I mean?
We we don't have the pumps or.
Or the capacity?
We have the capacity.
To separate, you mean?
Right, we 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 do, we do have uh gravity thickeners that all the sludge goes to. And then we go to a belt filter press. Uh but we just, you need all kinds of different pump configurations. And then they designed the plant back in nineteen seventy-five. It wasn't designed for that.
To make it really simple, to um remove nitrogen, you have to nitrify and denitrify, so that's tankage and long lead times as you mentioned. The phosphorus, you need uh filters. This would be putting on an entire new wing on the plant and running the wastewater through filters to remove all the phosphorus. And those limits are so darn low. The cost of that technology is so darn high.
And would that be another thing we'd have to dispose of? So.
Eventually you're gonna be there. And I think uh it's really part of this Long Island Sound Initiative. Bringing it up the Connecticut River to all the communities, every community's gonna be on the same permit. Um restrictions uh eventually, it's just taking a while to get there. Hopefully, your next permit cycle doesn't change much from your current permit. Uh but we are already projecting that the next permit after that, there will be some significant impacts. And if you look at the the rate study, the way it was developed, we projected that out to be about eight years where, you know, it really spikes up high. Potentially, that's when you think it could.
But for example, right now, uh Munson, who contributes to our wastewater treatment plant, would take about thirty percent of their stuff. They operate off of our permit. That's gonna end for them. Everybody's gonna have to get their own permit. So.
What is Munson gonna do with their their waste?
They're they're still gonna send it to us, but they will have to have a permit themselves though.
Right, there's a there's a lot of things uh like stormwater separation, I N I study for rainwater. Right then, they they were not mandated to do what Palmer had to do. Well, as that meeting in November, they are co-permitted now on our discharge permit. So everything that we have to follow, they have to follow. And they'll be getting administrative orders from the D E P or E P A or both to comply with what Palmer's already done. Like for sewer separation, I N I studies.
Make what's coming in better from there.
And it may reduce the flow that they send to you as well.
What's hel- what's what's helping us right now is our design flow is five point six for the treatment plant. Right now, we're around one point four to one point six. That nitrogen limit they put on us goes by total pounds discharged to the river. So right now our flows are so low that we can meet those numbers, but if I if we ever went up to five M G D.
Gonna get close.
Yeah, we that that's a whole different upgrade where you have to have different pumps recirculating for the uh nitrogen removal. I ain't gonna get too much into it, but it's it'll be significant upgrade to meet those nitrogen numbers that we'll have to meet if we ever get up the flows that high.
But we would need some major expansion in town for us to even get close to that, so.
Or or on the permit side.
Or yeah, or if they make the limit, if they make the limits that low.
Correct.
But as at a meeting we had in uh November, that I didn't get that impression of this permit that that's gonna be the case. Cause they even mentioned in at the meeting that we had that they were well aware of our design flow and how low our total flow is. And they they came right out and said, that's saving you guys from a full blow.